25 District 7 Board of Education meeting. Carrie, would you please call the roll?
Bertles, here.
Sanderson?
Here.
Aheart?
Bauer?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Carver?
Here.
Peady?
Here.
I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Can't decide which way is easier to read here. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the October 27th, 2025 agenda as has been presented this evening.
So moved, second.
Carrie, please call the roll.
Bertles?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Carver?
Yes.
Peady?
Yes.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board's executive closed special session meeting held on September 22nd, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Carrie, please call the roll.
Carver?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Peady?
Yes.
I will entertain another motion to approve the minutes of the board's executive closed special session meeting held on September 25th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Carrie, please call the roll.
Brian?
Yes.
Carver?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Peady?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board's executive closed special session meeting held on October 6th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Carrie, please call the roll.
Brian?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Same.
Carver?
Yes.
Peady?
Yes.
Okay. And I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board's executive closed special session meeting held on October 20th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Carrie, please call the roll.
Brian?
Yes.
Carver?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Peady?
Yes.
I didn't miss any, did I? That's a lot. Okay. At this time, Dr. Duncan will provide the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Peady. There's been a lot going on since we have met last. But first, before we get going on what I've been up to, I want to recognize our principals. For those who don't know, the month of October is Principal Appreciation Month. We are fortunate to have 12 of the best principals the school district could ask for. The principalship is one of the most demanding roles in education because the job never stops. There's so many things that are out of their control that impact them professionally and personally. The weight of being responsible for the safety and education of students is one that cannot be described in words. Not only are they responsible for their students, but for leading and supporting their staff, whether leading a team of 15 or 150, our principals work to provide the care and guidance to help everyone succeed. Walking into the building before everyone arrives because that is the only time that is yours and being the last one to leave can be a lonely and exhausting experience. But that is what it takes to be great. That is what our principals do. This is a tremendous responsibility and one that is so impactful. Thank you to our principals for their leadership and dedication to empowering each student to achieve personal success. We have some of the best principals that we could ask for, and if you get a chance to see them during the month of October, please let them know how much you appreciate them. All right, so since last, I have, as acting superintendent, we've been meeting with the mayors of Edwardsville, Carvin, Wharton, and Hamel, just more making sure that there weren't any things that was going on within these cities that I needed to get reconnected with or making sure to update the board on. So that's been fun, and so now what we're going to do is we're going to have a quarterly meeting with all the mayors at once, just to make sure there's, you know, maintaining the relationship between us and all the municipalities. The next set of meetings that I'm working on getting scheduled is with the chief police of Edwardsville, Carvin, and the Madison County Chief of Police as well. We want to look at school safety. We've done a lot of good things with our school safety plans, but now we want to take it to the next step just to find ways to continue to improve our process to ensure that our students and staff are safe in all of our schools. One thing that I've put on my radar as the acting superintendent is to be a little more visible. That's been a challenge the first month of being in this role, but moving forward, it is my goal to be in at least one building of every level each week. There's nothing more special than getting in our buildings and seeing the energy that's in there, seeing our kids, seeing our teachers teach. It is so invigorating, and so that is something I'm challenging myself to do much more frequently. Now things have slowed down a bit. So anybody going to the Halloween parade, we will be there. District 7 will have a float, the trailer. There are a couple people I'm still waiting to hear from on this board to come join us. No peer pressure. We have administrators, we have families, secretaries, a good group. So if you see us, please make sure you wave and give us a shout out. Mr. Courtney, I asked him if we could buy big candy bars. He told me no. So, but we didn't buy Tootsie Rolls either, so we met in the middle on it. He gave us a little, gave me a little money to spend. Yeah, we're looking forward to that. So I wanted to give you guys a quick update on what's going on with some of our construction projects, especially the ones we discussed recently. There will be a much more detailed update coming December. The first one is our EHS track. The work of the track is now complete. The only thing that's left to do at the track at Edwardsville High School is the structural spray and the striping. That will happen probably next week. It all depends on the weather, but once the structural spray is laid, the lanes are striped, that track project will be complete. Here are a couple pictures of the EHS track. If you get out there this year, it's really coming around. That whole complex area is looking really nice. The Lincoln track as well has been complete. Their structural spray has been taken care of, and they're just waiting on lane striping as well. This was a major upgrade to the Lincoln track. Again, very nice facilities that we're going to have. We're looking for some fast times this year for our track programs. The Liberty Gym floor, this was discussed at the last board meeting. The board approved the addition of the marshure barrier. So at this point now, the marshure barrier has been laid. All three subfloors have been installed, and they are now laying the actual gym floor. The anticipated date is right before Christmas to have that gym up and running. We're really looking forward to having that back so PE can get going back inside and start hosting home sporting events as well. Couple pictures of that gym. If you guys on the way out want to beep your head in there, you'll get to see that. And this picture here is the floor. This is what the floor, the design of the floor, what it will look like when it's finished. It's a pretty slip design, so that's just going to be a nice playing surface for our volleyball teams, cheer teams, basketball teams to be able to compete in there. In regards to Lincoln, we are wrapping up Phase 1, doing punch walks, trying to knock those out, doing a lot of minor repair type of issues. Again, when we do our big facility update, construction update, we'll go in a lot more detail and all the things going on in Lincoln Phase 1. So we have a lot of special things happening in our buildings. The first one that we want to touch base with or let you guys know about is Leclair. Leclair was established, achieved Model PLC status, which is a huge accomplishment. There are only three schools south of Chicago to actually achieve this. Leclair is one of them. They're the only school in the Metro East. There are 42 schools in Illinois and 800 schools internationally. To become a Model PLC school, first you have to show a commitment to PLC at work concepts for three years, clear measurable evidence of improved student learning, and annual data that confirms continued implementation of success. Leclair will be recognized at a later date. They will come present to the board, to the community, all the work that they did to achieve Model PLC status, but this is a huge accomplishment for Leclair Elementary School, so we can give them a big shout out.
Awesome.
And then the Illinois Report Card. On Thursday, the Illinois Report Card will be released. You guys have received a couple, or you guys have received some communications from me about the Illinois Report Card. The importance of the Illinois Report Card is it provides insights into the school performance, helps identify areas of celebrating, areas of growth, shows how our schools are performing against schools across the state. And then I will show, we will have a breakdown of the Illinois Report Card in November, myself, Mrs. Andrea Groderfent, Mrs. Tara Fox. We will all come together to present to you kind of our data for the year. We're really excited for this data to come out on Thursday to kind of show the community where we're at in terms of our students performing and our teachers teaching. We got a little video to show you, to give you a little snippet of what's coming.
That's called a cliffhanger, right?
That's called a cliffhanger. Yeah, that's called a cliffhanger. I will tell you, Mr. Fox is a little more excited than what he was doing in that video. He doesn't like surprises, so that was kind of, we caught him off guard there. But we got, again, like I said, there's going to be some good news coming on Thursday. We just can't wait to show the community. And then the last thing, I want to kind of do something different. We get a lot of emails. The district is so big, there's so many things going on, and I think what happens is many times we forget to recognize the great things that we have going in District 7. So I got an email this weekend, and they're not always positive, they're always negative, but this one just struck me. And I was like, you know, this is what we need to do all the time. So what I want to start doing is inviting the community before, what they mention now, the next board meeting. If you email me, if there's something that you see that's happening in the buildings, in the district that you think needs to be recognized, email me, and I'm adding to the superintendent shout out list. And then each board meeting, I will then kind of bring this to the community. The one email today that came that really struck me was a parent that just emailed about how hard they notice our grounds guys are working. This is a football parent who said, she goes, "I've been at all the Friday night football games. I've been at EHS, I've been at Leclair, and I see the same faces. I see these men and women working so hard to keep our facilities uptight, to work parking, work Friday nights, work on the weekends, work the band competitions." And so I just want to tell all of our custodians and all of our grounds crew how thankful we are to have you because your role is so important in this district, and we're just happy to have you a part of District 7. And parents, community members, email me. We will continue to bring these up at these board meetings, just to make sure that, you know, we are celebrating all the great things that we have going on in District 7.
Awesome.
Is that it? Any questions? Oh, sir. Okay, cool. At this time, Claire Johnson will provide the junior student representative's report.
Good evening. As we are already halfway through our shortened week, I thought I should give one last reminder to everyone that parent-teacher conferences are scheduled for Wednesday and Thursday of this week, and Friday is the Teacher Institute Day. Leclair parents save the date for Kids Night Out on Friday, December 5th, from 6:30 to 8:30. Permission forms will be sent home with students on Monday, November 3rd. With the holiday season quickly approaching, it is time we put together our holiday cards signed by the Board of Education. Whoa. We would like our students to help design these cards through a holiday card design contest. A winner will be chosen from each of the primary, secondary, middle, and high school levels, and the winning designs will be printed on cards to be sent to employees and community partners. For more information on entry and guidelines, please check out the district website. Midway's PTO is hosting a Bobby's Caramel Apple fundraiser. Help out a husky in your life by purchasing some caramel apples. Each caramel apple sold comes with a free regular turtle sundae or any regular feature sundae of your choice. Forms are due by November 12th. Calling all elementary authors, it is never too early to start brainstorming your next creative masterpiece. Books for the 2025-2026 Young Authors Competition are due Friday, February 6th. For more information, check out your school's website. Mark your calendars. Cassin's is hosting their Veterans Day Parade and Breakfast on Monday, November 10th at 9:30 a.m. Veterans are invited to participate in a drive-through parade beginning in the Cassin Circle Drive on the side of the building. Staff and students will line the route, waving flags and cheering in honor of all that have served. Following the parade, veterans are invited to join for a complimentary breakfast in the Cassin's cafeteria. RSVP by Wednesday, October 29th, using the link on the Cassin's website. Cassin's Cougar Council is having a food drive from today, October 27th, all the way through November 7th. Drop offs will be during school hours or at parent-teacher conferences. All donations will go to District 7 families. Several District 7 schools are participating in the Madison County Composting Challenge this year. Students can join in and learn about composting while having fun. The challenge runs through November 21st. Check if your school is involved on their website. I hope you all enjoy your Halloween weekend and a reminder that trick-or-treating is on the 30th, and make sure not to miss the Halloween parade on the 31st at 6:30.
Thank you. At this time, Jesse Proctor will provide the senior student representative's report.
Thank you. So recently, Mr. Schleter, an English teacher at EHS, won Winning Manuscript for the Richard Matthews Prize for Poetry. His poetry has been awarded the Frontier Prize for New Poets, as well as an Illinois Arts Council Award, and has appeared in many literary journals. Lily Cruzen and Emma Burkenmeyer are the Students of the Month after helping a student who got lost after the homecoming parade. Lily drove by and saw him walking alone and pulled over to help, and she called Emma, who called the student's parent. Thank you to Emma and Lily for being great representatives of the district. Homecoming Week and the Dance was extremely successful after selling over 1,000 tickets. The pep rally dance and Week leading up to the dance were extremely spirit-filled and went amazing. Thank you to all the teachers and district workers who helped chaperone the dance and took time out of their schedules to do this. Thank you to the EHS Student Council for putting on a well-planned week of events, and a big thank you to the EHS student body for showing up ready to support our school. It could not have happened without everyone's help. The EHS Tigers football team is headed to IHSA football playoffs. They will play in Oak Lawn at Richards High School on October 31st at 6:00 p.m. Good luck, Tigers. The Tigers soccer team had a tough loss against Collinsville after losing 0 to 1, but they had an amazing season and have done a great job representing EHS sports. Good luck in all of your future paths. Edwardsville Girls Tennis placed eighth at IHSA State with Katie Woods and Alvinas Salemi finishing fifth. Congratulations, girls. Congratulations to the EHS Boys and Girls Cross Country Team on winning the IHSA Regional Championship. Both teams were able to bring home titles and are now on the sectionals. A huge congratulations to the Edwardsville Girls Flag Football Team. Although they lost in their match against Chicago Perspective, they had an amazing inaugural season and paved the way for the future of girls' flag football at EHS. The EHS Counseling Department took a group of students to the 2025 Metro Construction Career Expo, where they got to explore different types of construction trades and hands-on training. Congratulations to Lucy Hebkey for earning a perfect score at the FFA Horse Judging Competition. And lastly, I have something on the same note as Dr. Duncan. I want to give a huge thank you to the custodians at EHS. Your constant willingness to help made Homecoming Week possible. The school would not be able to survive without the help of our custodians, and they deserve all the recognition possible. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, does any board member have a report to share?
I do. I had the opportunity to sit in on the midway school improvement plan by Principal Sedaris, and just want to say, great job, and I'm really proud to hear those every time. It's, they just do good work. And then also, I had the opportunity to go with Jill and look at the softball field and all the work that's being done on that, and it's going to be awesome when it's done. And then we walked over to the high school and saw the commons area and then the paint job on the floor of the gym. If you guys haven't seen that, you need to go see it. It is just really cool. I love the work that was done there, it just really looked nice. And then kudos to Kyle Stewart for the great tour that he gave us.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to inform the board and the public that we lost a past employee this past week. Coach Jim Zucansy passed away. He was a longtime teacher and a lifelong supporter of our district. He taught at the junior high, retiring in 1999, and he worked to found the, and coached the football and the track and field programs at that junior high. And with his retiring, or with his teaching career spanning over 34 years, he had the unique experience to teach two generations of many of the families that are, that had come through this district. So he and his wife Gloria, who had spent her career as a teacher as well, was often seen at various school district events as well as other just community events. So just keep their family in your thoughts and prayers while they're going through this difficult time.
Thank you, Jill. Okay, thank you. We are entering the section of the meeting where we recognize special guests. I'm sorry, was it, did anybody else have anything else they wanted to do? I'm sorry. Sorry, moved on there. We're in the section of the meeting where we recognize special guests, students who have excelled and provide the opportunity for visitors to address the school board. At this time, I'd like to introduce Alec Fox, Principal of Edwardsville High School, and Katie Beavis O'Neill, Principal of Albert Katson's Elementary, who will recognize their Students of the Month for September.
All right, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Duncan, and Board of Education, for allowing us to be here tonight to recognize our students. I'm going to read because this girl is too special to miss any detail. So everybody, this is Leila. Leila has been so kind and intentional in sharing her firsthand knowledge with her class. The first module in their wit and wisdom curriculum is all about the Native American culture, and she has been able to bring in her firsthand experiences about her family's Chickasaw culture. She's even introduced her family to their native language, shared her insights, and those are simply things that can't just be found in a textbook. It's just those unique firsthand experiences that she's been able to share with her class that many students wouldn't have the confidence to share, but she is so confident and able to share that information. On top of those things, she's a hard worker, she leads with kindness, she takes pride in her culture, and that's evident through her willingness to share. So we're just so thankful that she is part of our Cassin's Ohana and lucky that we get to recognize her tonight. So thank you very much.
Bryson, come on up. Thank you again to the board, Superintendent Dr. Duncan. Thank you all for being here tonight. I am a stickler for details, and the video, I was excited. I just don't show it, maybe, the way I should, but I was excited. But I am a stickler for details, and I have tried to instill in our students at the high school that it is not what you do when people are watching you, it is what you do when people are not looking and not watching you that will define your character and who you are as a person and who you are as a young man. And that's why Bryson is here today. I want to thank him. Bryson, for years, has assisted with the small things around the building, specifically helping out with the custodial staff during lunch, picking up things, taking care of his area, and taking care of other areas. And a school is defined by the small things that every student does, not the one big thing. And big things are great, but the everyday culture is built by gentlemen like this. So I appreciate him. Someone was watching. This is not something he was just doing this year. This is something he's been doing for a couple years, but someone was watching and someone saw it and recognized, and I thought it was important to recognize him as well. So I appreciate you. You do what you do to make Edwardsville High School a better place. Continue doing that. You're going to be a great young man when you grow up. Boy, you're kind of grown up, so. So congratulations, Bryson O.
At this time...
Yes, sir.
At this time, Dr. Duncan will present a few special student recognitions.
Edwardsville High School is fortunate to have students who not only excel academically, but who also demonstrate care and leadership when it matters most. First, I would like to recognize two students who helped one of their classmates navigate through a difficult situation. It wasn't that they helped, but it was the way in which they helped this student and their family. Their thoughtfulness and compassion in actions are what the District 7 community is all about. Would Emma Burkenmeyer and Lily Cruzen please come forward? I'll be right with you, girls. The next student from EHS I would like to recognize is Andrea LaGarlinghaus. When an adult experienced a medical emergency, this EHS senior acted immediately to get help and ensure that that person received the care they needed. Her compassion and presence of mind exemplify the character we strive to foster in District 7. Ms. Garlinghaus, will you please come up as well? Can we give these ladies a round of applause?
Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce Ginger McDaniel, District Math Interventions, who will present a special recognition to Michael Sabatino, PE teacher at EHS.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Board of Education. So I'm going to try to get through this without crying. I was involved in a traffic accident that was, I think, serious at the time. And on the way to work, I had several meetings, some with Dr. Duncan that day and all the principals, and I had a traffic accident, and Mr. Sabatino stopped for me. So he had no idea who I was, I had no idea who he was. I don't know if he helped me out of my car on the ground or if he got there soon after. Some of it's a little fuzzy.
There was a lot going on.
There was a lot going on. All I know is he sprang into action, he called 911, emergency services, for me. I gave him a laundry list of people to call because I knew I'm like, I'm going to be late to work. I've never been late to work, I've got meetings, I don't know what time they are, but you've got to call this person, and this person, and this person. So, and he's like, "Don't worry, I'll take care of it." I think I may have even said, you know, "Let them know I'm just going to be a few minutes late." And he assessed, he's like, "I think you may have a concussion and you've probably got a broken arm." But more importantly than, what he was doing for me was how he made me feel. His caring and compassion to stop at a very chaotic situation, because it was a chaotic situation at the time. He somehow found a way to pull over. He stopped for a total stranger to give care and compassion and help. And that's something I'll never forget. When I think about it, he's my hero, like, to me. He is Edwardsville, the town of Edwardsville Person of the Year forever. But he embodies what we want for our students. He shows great quality and care. Just as quickly as he came, he faded out, so, because he wasn't with me in the ambulance. I would have kept him though, for sure. So, but he did great. I'm sure he was late for work that day because it was pretty close, and he did, he's like, "I'm a teacher." I'm like, "Oh, my goodness." So...
I took care of all that.
He did such great things, and he, the care that he gave a total stranger, I can't imagine the care then that he gives for people that he knows, like his students and their classes, the students that he coaches. You're just, you're an all-around great citizen and somebody that I think we should all embody those qualities. I'm so grateful for you that day. I've thought about you a lot during my recovery, and I'm just, I'm so grateful that you provided comfort and care for me that day, and you really helped calm me down because I don't think I was that calm in 2020. I was a little out of sorts, so I just want to say thank you.
Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as recommended this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? Carrie, please call the roll.
Brian?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Carver?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes. Okay, a link has been provided in this evening's agenda to locate the most recent building newsletters for each school. Definitely encourage everybody to check them out, some good stuff in there. And at this time, Michael Taplin, Equity Advisor Council Committee Member, will provide a report.
On Thursday, September 25th, the Equity Advisory Council met at the District 7 Center for Learning with Dr. Smith, our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. This meeting was the first of at least four meetings that will take place this school year. Introductions were made and new members shared their various experiences at District 7 as either students or parents, and why they have an interest in serving on the committee. Dr. Smith shared a draft of the proposed equity principles and what those principles might look like implemented in District 7. Members were given the opportunity to share opinions and give feedback on the principles. This concludes the report respectfully submitted.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Dr. Duncan will now discuss with the Board an update on Edwardsville's softball field.
All right, first, I'd like to introduce my team. Have them come on up to the table here. Can we have Tom Sissel, Nate Clary, Josh Barry, Katie Hoppy? Please come join us. Two other very important members of this team are Mr. Dave Courtney and Mr. Gene Berto. So before we get started, I just want to make, you know, a comment to the public and to this Board that we, as a team, recognize that this process was not done the most efficient way possible, and we know that when we come to you to present projects, that we shouldn't come to you multiple times asking for, you know, additions and different things. This team kind of tried to clean that up a little bit, and moving forward, that's what you should expect from us, that when we come to you asking for money for a project, that it will be done the right way, you will get it one time, and everything will be included. With that said, I also want to make sure you guys know that Oates Associates has been a huge, huge help to us throughout this whole entire project, not only softball, but with both of our tracks. Their role is to design the projects, they are the engineers to the projects. They tell us what, for safety purposes, things that we need, functionality purposes, things that we need, and they have been a huge help to us throughout this whole entire project. So Tom and Nate, just want to say thank you for all that you've done for us throughout all of this. All right, so softball project, here's a quick update for you. Initially, the Board approved $549,000 for the new turf softball field. Then we came and requested another $58,000 for soil stabilization, and then another $64,000 for a new backstop, which is paid for by the boosters. There'll be a couple of pictures in this slideshow to show you. And then there was also one that we put on here, which I'll explain, the new E-Paw, because the initial plans did not have any kind of Edwardsville branding on the field. As we go through this presentation, I think it is important for everybody to understand that all of these additional things that we are asking for, these are not cosmetic things, we're not trying to build the Busch Stadium of softball fields. What we are doing is we want to build a softball field that is safe for our players, the ones that our players, our coaches, and the community can be proud of. So this E-Paw, this was a new addition that we recognized was important, and I think many times people can say, "Well, why do you need an E-Paw on this, on your facilities?" And I could go on and on and on about what the E-Paw means to me, but in terms of athletic facilities, the first thing is when opponents come to Edwardsville and they see that E-Paw, it's a reminder. It lets them know that if they haven't done their preparation, they're in for a long day. This E-Paw is not just something that they see. Opponents come to Edwardsville and they see it, and it's like, "Hey, we better buckle up." So it is important from that standpoint. The second way, second thing it's important, is that that E-Paw represents excellence. Our coaches, our athletes, we're striving for excellence every day that we step on the field, step on the court. We may not always achieve it, but that is our goal, and that's that constant reminder of our expectations. And the last thing that the E-Paw does is, and this is non-athletic, but in Edwardsville, you know, our goal is to ensure that all of our students achieve personal success. And what I believe that is, is preparing them for when they graduate high school. This E-Paw is the one thing that unites every student at Edwardsville High School. This E-Paw, when you go to graduation, every kid, regardless of their race, regardless of their sex, regardless of any kind of demographic factor, they wear that E-Paw. That E-Paw is us, that E-Paw is this community, and anytime that you don't put the E-Paw somewhere, it ruins our brand, it waters us down, and it kind of just completely disconnects us from all the history of Edwardsville sports. So for me, this E-Paw, this was a no-brainer, and I would tell the Board and the community that anytime there's a sports facility complex that goes up and there's no E-Paw, you want to question it, because it is not what's good for our community, it's not what's good for athletes. Katie?
So I'll talk about the outfield berm. I think when it was first discussed, it was, we had a lot of dirt and what to do with it. For our sectional semifinal game, we played at a school up north who had a berm, that's the first picture up at the top. If you've been to one of our games, we have a windscreen to where you can't sit in the outfield, our seating is very limited, so for the berm, for me, the number one thing was to add additional seating for our fans and families. So that's the number one. Gives that stadium-like feel, it's gonna be really cool for the girls, but all the excess dirt, which is a lot, especially if you've been out there, you've seen it, we have to pay to get rid of that dirt, and right now, we're gonna use all of that dirt with the berm. So we're saving money so we don't have to move it, building that structure, so helps give our fan support and also gets rid of the dirt.
And Katie is the varsity softball coach, and so she's been a part of this process, kind of guiding us in things that she believes her athletes need and what that field should take.
The other ones are images of the backstop. Do you care if I steal your laser pointer? If you look at this, so it's gonna be really clear visibility, if you've ever been over to Plummer Park, they have them as well. A big thing for the backstop for us was, and they'll talk about fencing later on, but the fencing's really old for me, I wanted to make sure that we had clear sightlines if we were gonna do this. The time is now when you do the turf, right? You don't go back after we have turf. This wouldn't happen, but this is what our booster club is paying for. What I want you guys to notice here is the angle in which that backstop is, so it's not curved, it's straight across, so the netting is very tight. That'll be important for us later on, but you can see it looks very sharp. You can go to the next image as well. That's what we will have at our field.
So I'm gonna talk about the bleacher retrofit and the retrofitting that the bleachers will have to have for safety at the new backstop. And the next pictures we have are just photos of the bleachers themselves. That shows the condition of the bleachers, and, next slide, please. And you can see that the current bleachers are rounded, and the next slide even shows it better. Whoops, there you go. And that's rounded, and Katie showed you how sharp and angular the other bleacher, the new backstop's gonna be. What that will do is, I've got this inset photo down here, if we didn't retrofit the aluminum bleachers with some extra structural members to fill that hole, you would have a gap, as shown in yellow here, where the spectators or families could fall into that hole if the bleachers were not retrofitted to butt right up against that new backstop. So this is the recommended thing for safety that we need.
So the next piece of this project is, in the northwest corner of the field, there is a storm structure that you can see there that deals with stormwater runoff, and then there's also a concrete ramp to the right, and that ramp is how the grounds crew accesses the field with their equipment to do any work that they need to do on the field. What we're proposing here is to pour a concrete pad in this area, and what that'll do is it'll help the stormwater to run off to that drain, and then it will also ensure that the grounds crew can access this field without dragging any loose material, rock, grass, dirt, and that kind of stuff out onto the field.
And Josh is our head of the grounds, and so, you know, he gives us a lot of functionality perspectives about our complex.
So next up, there's a suggested addition for a concrete pad between the batting cage and the first base line, and the bullpen, and also the bullpen is in that area. So the bullpen is gonna be turfed, and it's gonna move to the fence, so this is the bullpen, and it's gonna move toward the fence. And this section of the fence is suggested to straighten out, so it's not jutted. So what will happen here is, this will be turfed, and this fence will go straight across. There would be this strip of grass that's about five feet wide, all the way down the right field, yeah, the right field, first baseline, and for maintenance purposes and safety as well, a little bit here, because this fence is right up against the batting cage, and to move it in, it needs to move into here so that balls aren't ricocheting off this fence and ricocheting back into the players when they're in the batting cage. So, but by moving this fence, you're gonna have this grass and rock strip in here that needs to be filled in with, we're suggesting a concrete pad to clean up the maintenance and improve the safety in that area.
I want to talk about the fence options we have. We were given two fence options for replacement. The first option is going to be along the foul lines, so you're gonna see, on that slide there, you can see, here's the posts there, the fence has been removed, and you can see from the height, they're only about 42 inches tall. So players can lean on them when they're in the dugout, but if you've got a line drive that comes towards the bullpen area, it could enter the bullpen, somebody's not paying attention, could be a potential injury. So the first option is to replace those fences along the foul lines with a new six-foot-tall fence. That's really a safety improvement for that. Option two is going to replace all of the fence in the entire softball area, so not just the foul line fences, but the outfield fence, and then there are some fences along the pedestrian path as well that would get replaced. The condition of those fences is very poor, and it is going to deteriorate at an accelerated rate the longer it's out there. Once it starts to rust, it's just gonna get worse. And replacing all of the fence now puts all of this on the same life cycle as the turf. So when you come in and in 25 years, you need a new turf, you don't have to worry about, this fence is old and this fence is new. We're trying to replace this fence as it gets worse in a few If you've been to one of our games, we have a windscreen where you can't sit in the outfield. Our seating is very limited. So for the berm, for me, the number one thing was to add additional seating for our fans and families. So that's the number one. Gives that stadium-like feel, it's going to be really cool for the girls. But all the excess dirt, which is a lot, especially if you've been out there, you've seen it, we have to pay to get rid of that dirt. And right now, we're going to use all of that dirt with the berm. So we're saving money, so we don't have to move it, building that structure. So helps give our fan support and also gets rid of the dirt.
And Katie is the varsity softball coach, and so she's been a part of this process, kind of guiding us in things that she believes her athletes need and what that field should, should take.
The other ones are images of the backstop. Do you care if I steal your laser pointer? If you look at this, so it's going to be really clear visibility. If you've ever been over to Plummer Park, they have them as well. A big thing for the backstop for us was, and they'll talk about fencing later on, but the fencing's really old for me. I wanted to make sure that we had clear sightlines if we were going to do this. The time is now when you do the turf, right? You don't go back after we have turf. This wouldn't happen, but this is what our booster club is paying for. What I want you guys to notice here is the angle in which that backstop is. So it's not curved, it's straight across that fence, so the netting is very tight. That'll be important for us later on. But you can see it looks very sharp. You can go to the next image as well. That's what we will have at our field.
So I'm going to talk about the bleacher retrofit and the retrofitting that the bleachers will have to have for safety at the new backstop. And the next pictures we have are just photos of the bleachers themselves. That shows the condition of the bleachers and, uh, next slide, please. And you can see that the current bleachers are rounded, and the next slide even shows it better. Whoops, there you go. And that's rounded, and Katie showed you how sharp and angular the other bleacher, the new backstop's going to be. What that will do is, I've got this inset photo down here. If we didn't retrofit the aluminum bleachers with some extra structural members to fill that hole, you would have a gap, as shown in yellow here, where the spectators or families could fall into that hole if the bleachers were not retrofitted to butt right up against that new backstop. So this is the recommended thing for safety that we need.
So the next piece of this project is, in the northwest corner of the field, there is a storm structure that you can see there that deals with storm water runoff. And then there's also a concrete ramp to the right. And that ramp is how the grounds crew accesses the field with their equipment to do any work that they need to do on the field. What we're proposing here is to pour a concrete pad in this area. And what that'll do is it'll help the storm water to run off to that drain. And then it will also ensure that the grounds crew can access this field without dragging any loose material, rock, grass, dirt, and that kind of stuff out onto the field.
And Josh is our head of the grounds, and so, you know, he gives us a lot of functionality perspectives about our, our complex.
So next up, there's a suggested addition for a concrete pad between the batting cage and the first base line. And the bullpen, and also the bullpen is in that area. So the bullpen is going to be turfed, and it's going to move to the fence. So this is the bullpen, and it's going to move toward the fence. And this section of the fence is, is suggested to straighten out, so it's not jutted. So what will happen here is, this will be turfed, and this fence will go straight across. There would be this strip of grass that's about five feet wide, all the way down the right field, yeah, the right field, first baseline. And for maintenance purposes and safety as well, a little bit here, because this fence is right up against the batting cage. And to move it in, it needs to move into here, so that balls aren't ricocheting off this fence and ricocheting back into the players when they're in the batting cage. So, but by moving this fence, you're going to have this grass and rock strip in here that needs to be filled in with, we're suggesting a concrete pad to clean up the maintenance and improve the safety in that area.
I want to talk about the fence options we have. We were given two fence options for replacement. The first option is going to be along the foul lines. So you're going to see, on that slide there, you can see, here's the posts there. The fence has been removed, and you can see from the height, they're only about 42 inches tall. So players can, can lean on them when they're in the dugout, but if you've got a line drive that comes towards the bullpen area, it could enter the bullpen. Somebody's not paying attention, could be a potential injury. So the first option is to replace those fences along the foul lines with a new six-foot-tall fence. That's really a safety improvement for that. Option two is going to replace all of the fence in the entire softball area. So not just the foul line fences, but the outfield fence. And then there are some fences along the pedestrian path as well that would get replaced. The condition of those fences is very poor, and it is going to deteriorate at an accelerated rate, the longer it's out there. Once it starts to rust, it's just going to get worse. And replacing all of the fence now puts all of this on the same life cycle as the turf. So when you come in and in 25 years, you need a new turf, you don't, you don't have to worry about, this fence is old and this fence is new. You're trying to replace this fence as it gets worse in a few years' time. You would then have to work around that new turf system that you just installed. It wouldn't be as clean of an installation, it would cost more money, because you've waited and they don't want to damage that turf system that was just installed. Here's some more photos of the condition of the, of the fence. Here's a overall view, so again, option one in blue. The fence down the foul lines, as well as new fencing right here for this bullpen on the visitor's side. Option two is in orange, so option two includes all of option one. And the outfield fence, the bullpen fence here on the home, home side, and this pedestrian fence right here as well. That is it. If you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I got lots. So if we're looking at your, I got my own laser pointer too. So if we're looking at your, let's start with your, your grate right here, correct? Is that going to be accessible to players?
Uh, that's a good question. So no, in our design, if you can see that blue line continues up, so there would be the new fence, if it's installed, if it's accepted, would get extended that way. So it'd go, coming from right here into the north. So we would cut that off from field to play.
Okay, where is, so obviously this whole thing in here is getting turfed. And then we have bullpens here and bullpens here. Where does the turf stop? And what are we keeping and what are we throwing away?
The, the bullpens are receiving turf as well. So those will be a turf system. Basically, everything, everything inside those fences will be turf. We don't want there to be some areas that are going to get overgrown and become unsightly, and you can drag dirt out there if you still got grass around there. So all of the playing area and the bullpens are turfed.
Okay, so in lieu of putting a $4,800, I forget what that number was, $4,800 concrete walkway here, we could extend the turf straight out there, and we wouldn't have to worry about mowing, runoff, concrete, or anything else. We're only talking five extra feet.
Then the thing we talked about, and that was talked about in the field, and this is probably more of a question for Katie to follow up on. But if the fence, are you saying to leave the blue fence where it's at? And, or are you saying to move the blue fence towards the, uh, where the batting cage?
Your blue fence would stay the same, but your turf would continue on past the blue fence into the bullpen area, because you're going to turf that anyway. Plummer Field's set up just like that. It goes through the fence line into the bullpen. And I don't see why we would stop, put in concrete, and then restart the turf. Why not just continue it all the way out?
So you're, the bullpen will be turf, and you're talking about that concrete area along the batting cage?
Yeah.
It could be, it could, it could be turf, but it would be, it would cost, it would still cost something to turf that area. It would, it would probably be similar cost, to be honest with you. Drainage-wise, it would be kind of, it would be a little bit of a challenge, but we could do it to slope the, slope the base. What's, what drains is what's under the turf, actually, back towards the drainage system.
Right.
But, you know, that's a, that's a preference or an option. If, if you would like us to explore that as the board, that would be a cost, though, to turf that area, so it would be similar.
I don't know what the cost of that versus concrete is. And so that's the options I'm looking for. I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to demo that fence, and we're going to put in all the prep work to do all the turf, it's nothing to continue on five extra feet.
Right.
And then the prep work is already there. Same as the storm shelter or the storm drain. If it's not accessible to kids, if it's not accessible to players, then we're going for cosmetic. So, I mean, you could do river rock, which would probably stop some of the flow, but you could also turf that.
So this turfing in the drainage area would be very difficult, because the rubber, the rubber material comes out if you have more than a half percent slope. And that area has more than a half percent slope. I would definitely recommend, not recommend turfing that area.
Okay, the rubber matting that goes on the top to dampen it?
Yes, it floats out when you get heavy rains. If it's on too, if it's on too much of a slope, it will definitely move, and it'll go into that drain, which we obviously don't want to happen. So that, that area should be hard, hard escape.
And can I clarify?
Sure.
The two bullpen areas are receiving a turf top. It's a concrete pad underneath. So what we're talking about, extension to both of those areas in, near the drainage structure and that strip between the batting cage and the fence, is a continuation of that concrete. It just wouldn't receive a turf surface on top of that.
Okay.
What's on the batting cage? Is that, what's the end of?
The batting cage would be similar, it's just a blue turf. So it's a, it's a concrete pad with a blue turf on top.
Yep, there, okay. The solution that's on the table is a continuation of the concrete that's already being poured out there. So it is, you know, when you're talking about, it's nothing to continue five more feet. It's the same thing with the concrete.
Okay.
Because that process is already there. That turf is in the bullpen area, because you want that to be soft for the players. It's get, it's just getting turf on top of a concrete pad. So just continue the concrete pad down, down the line, but don't put turf on top of that, because there's no clay happening in there.
So where, where this little bullpen here, that's a concrete pad that's under there? So that's, it's not like you can pick that up and move it? You'd actually have to pour another matching concrete pad?
No, we are pouring a new concrete pad for the bullpen in the project.
Oh, well, why not just move the bullpen to the fence line?
We are, we are.
Shifting.
We are, the problem is from the pole to the foreground. In that photo, the concrete pad on the current design ends right here.
Okay.
And so it's this area that will be grass or, and rock if it's not poured in with concrete.
Or extend the turf from the field all the way to this edge here?
Either one, I think, I personally think the turf will be more expensive.
Okay.
Turf is pretty expensive, the, the actual top itself.
Okay.
But you could do either one. We were recommending the concrete, because it's outside the fence, and everything outside the fence doesn't have to be soft for, for play.
Right.
And for see.
Is this a project that, once we end the turf at this, that Josh, maybe District Seven, could absorb? I understand that it would be silly to put a mower right there for two stripes of grass.
Yeah.
And a rock would go everywhere. But is that something that we could absorb down the road?
I think it makes sense while they're already concreting this other stuff to go ahead and move forward. I mean, just having the, the crews already on site, it's going to be cheaper for them to do this extra section.
Okay.
As opposed to leaving it and do it later.
Okay. And then in regards to the fence, I, I personally, for safety's sake, I, I like the, can you go to the dugout view? That one, so for someone who, such as myself, who has coached a long time, that makes no sense to have a 42-inch fence there with the foul balls come off. I'm not quite sure six would be enough right there in front of the dugout. I also went out there, I sent photos of Plummer Field, and their entire cage, their entire dugout is fenced off all the way to the top, just to avoid those safety concerns. And then it's six foot from there on out. So I'm not sure if that would be something, just eliminating these poles running the turf up here, fencing this caged-in area here where the dugout is, and then continuing on with six foot there.
Yeah, we, we didn't get into the details right here, and we may have, we may have, we said six foot here. We actually are doing an eight-foot tall fence right in, in front of this dugout. At, Vernon Jones offered to do that for no, no increase. So we did talk about that before the meeting. So when we said six foot all the way down the line, it was eight foot in front of the dugout, then six foot behind.
Perfect, thank you.
Just, just as you had asked.
We're trying to surprise you, like, ta-da, we have a. That was what that was supposed to be, like.
Oh, wait, there's more.
And I think my, my last question, you know, when we're talking about, you know, I appreciate the comments Dr. Duncan made on the process. We all know what the process is, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse here. But we still have, as board members, we still have to look for the entire district as a whole. And as much as we'd love to have the track to get exactly what they want in the softball field, to get what they want, I struggle as a board member myself. You know, when I go in and I visit another school, let's just take Hamill, for example, that looks like it hasn't been painted in 20 years. And so when we're starting to assign where money goes, you know, those are the things that I consider when we start dealing with projects such as this. So when you ask for fencing, I understand that fencing looks great, and it'd be the cheapest to do it now, but chain link fence is not hard to install. And so what condition are the poles in that are out there? Can the poles be reused and down the line? It's nothing to stretch chain link fence around and refinish the poles in a, in a, you know, a rubberized coating. It'd be nothing to spray on there.
So I'll start this, and then if anybody wants to add to it. We did actually explore saving the poles, and explored that with Brennan Jones. And that was our first suggestion. They came back with the poles. It's, it's actually more economical to replace them, tend to paint them, because the paint is a time, is a laborious process, and it won't last as long. Because a field-applied product isn't going to last as long as a shop-applied paint. So we're not talking about apples to apples necessarily with leaving that fence and just putting new fabric on it and painting the posts.
Yeah.
It won't last as long, and they said it would cost just as much as full replacement.
But the, the timing is different, though. And lasting as long as it, you know, a new fence will last you, I don't know, let's just say 15 years, lack, lack argument's sake. And recoding and repainting those poles last you 10 years. I mean, that allows the board more time to figure out, you know, expansion, you know, expenses and project planning and stuff, rather than to deal with, you know, this has to happen right now, and then something down the line goes missing.
There is one more component to it, and I'm, you're definitely right that time is a fact, you know, timing's different. It's probably more like eight to 10 years with the paint and 20 years with new. But there is one more factor with it that is, is a big concern of ours. The turf goes right up to the fence right now. And if the fence is left in there the way it is now and needs to be replaced, let's say in eight years, there's a process that would have to take place to get the old fence out. So the fence has concrete foundations around it underground that we can't see. And to pull the posts out, that, that pulls out, you know, a bigger area than just a pole pulls out something like this. And the turf is going to have a nail, the turf is kind of like carpet in your house, where it's got a tack board up against the wall that you stretch it to, and then tack it down. Well, that tack board's going to be all the way around the outfield fence. And to take out the posts on the fence, that board would have to come up in the future, get peeled up, and all, and the rock, a foot or so of the rock would have to get peeled back along with the turf, you know, laid back, fence is pulled out. Then the new fence put in, then a new tack board put in, and the rock spread back out to the tack board, and the turf stretched back out to it. So that's, that's going to be a, that's going to have a cost associated with it. And then anytime I've ever in my career had, had a patch or something done to the turf, retrofitted, it doesn't turn out quite exactly the same way as what it, as it was when it was new. You might see a little waving or a little bit different grade in that last two feet up against the fence. So I wanted to make sure that we know what would happen in 10 years if, if the fence did end up having to get replaced in 10 years instead of now.
What's the, what's the warning track? What's the width of that? From the turf to the fence?
It's all turf now.
There's no warning track?
It's a, it's a, it's a, yeah.
On turf, it's public.
Yeah, turf fields, the warning track is turf.
Got it.
So it, it just looks, it's a different color, but it's still turf. It's pulled right up against the fence.
So what's the cost comparison between option one and option two on the fence? That was too fast for me to write down.
Yeah.
Dr. Duncan, if you can go back. Option one is $32,970, and option two is?
$79,000.
Yeah, $79,100.
And Matt, this is the new quote that we got.
Okay.
That's taken bid.
Okay.
About $2,000 cheaper.
There was some discussion about the soil stabilization, if we were going to need that or not, since we know the weather conditions now compared to speculation earlier. Are we using soil stabilization or not, or?
To be determined, because we're not at the point to make the, to have the proof roll.
Okay.
We did receive a lot of rain in the last couple of days, which is, which we were hoping not to get for this process, but to be determined. We have to do a proof roll, see how the soil stands up, and then make that decision in the field.
Okay. I didn't know timing of that, if we had those decisions made.
Not yet, I'm sorry.
When will you have to test? Because, I mean, we're supposed to have rain for the next, what, two days? So it's going to be a mess out there.
Yeah, so this week might be more of a wash for not being able to do that if it keeps raining. And we'd have to do that next week.
Okay. Is there a certain moisture content that it has to have in order for you to do a proof roll?
Optimum moisture would be, we want it to be put within a couple percent of the optimum moisture for the soil tests, yes.
Okay.
Somewhere around 15 to 20 percent moisture.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can't do it when it's sloppy.
Right.
With not soil, with mud.
Yeah.
How soon would you, how soon do you need answers? I, I mean, I like, I think I'm picking up what Jill's asking is, we've already approved 50, was it $58,000?
I think so.
For soil stabilization, and if that doesn't, if that's not needed, it's a no-brainer to just push that into the fence.
They pretty much need to know right now, because they're at the point where the field's scanned and cut down. They've got one, maybe one, two more days in the outfield to finish, and then they have to start putting that nailer board around the outside.
All right. But this is, this is just a discussion on an action item?
That's what I'm saying, we're not voting on this tonight, are we?
No.
Yeah.
So our action item is not till November. Would you know if we need the soil stabilization by November?
Likely, if it stops raining, we will. If we can, you know, if the moisture gets in that range where we can do it, yes.
Because I think the current plan is November 10th at the work session.
Yeah, that's basically two weeks of time.
Yeah.
Hopefully, so I'm, I'm guessing next week, so.
And it's, uh, last, last thing, the drainage ditch. You know, usually when you see those in shopping centers, there's mulch, or, which I wouldn't recommend, obviously, but, you know, there's, there's the big white rock. I call it river rock.
Riprap.
Yeah, riprap, that's it. Would riprap be sufficient around that and allow enough drainage off that field into that drainage area?
Which drainage ditch are we?
Instead of concrete?
Yeah, instead of $12,600 bucks in concrete.
Right.
That one?
Right here.
Where the ramp is.
If no one is in there, and we were just to rock that.
So no one's in there unless the ball goes wild out of the bullpen, and they've got to go back there to get it. So, I mean, there is, there's, there is a chance there's going to be people back there.
Yeah, but the ball could, I mean, in all fairness, the ball could go in the parking lot where cars are moving too, you know? We're all going to have to be careful at some point in time.
The other factor is the grounds crew's got to bring the, the drag equipment down that ramp through that area and out onto the field. So if their drag, if their drag goes across the rocky area, there's potential to mess up their equipment.
Okay, I, yeah, I thought we, you talked about putting in another gate, and we were eliminating that.
So that ramp stays, and then there's another gate on the other side to the left of the picture there.
Okay, where they can bring in equipment?
Right.
Okay. So there's a potential this won't even be used? That ramp?
This, this ramp will be used. So they'll come through the gate on the top of the ramp, they'll come down the ramp, and then they'll go out a second gate out onto the field.
Okay, because?
Because the fence will be all the way down, and now it's not.
All right, because my, my tour there was, this was going to come out.
Oh, no, that's not what.
That those were all planned, so you, can you go to the, can you flip over? Sorry, Dr. Duncan, go to the slides.
Because that was me right there.
This is where we had talked about in previous discussions, where there would be a fence for the sweeper or whatever's come in and out of. So this was initially when we first talked about the project. When things got bad, that we're not talking about all that, there was no place, there's no bit in there for, for an opening or a gate. So the only one is on that northwest corner that we talked. So the only one is on that northwest corner that we talked about, and then it would be double gated with, if we got the new fence for it to help with. There is no openings anywhere else on the field besides that out.
Okay. And as far as the, the new berm goes, it said change order up there?
So, yeah.
As well as the E-Po.
The new berm, actually building the, designing and building that berm, there is no change, like, if the soil is used on site, there's no change to the price of the project. And we designed a berm that takes our goals to take all the dirt there. So.
Cool.
It saves, there's actually a five to six thousand dollar savings, if you do math, for doing that berm, that, what we're doing.
And then is there a change order for this addition on the E-Po, since it's outside of our contractual agreement?
That'd be done.
Yes, that's a change order, but that's something we're going to pay through our marketing account. If we have a marketing account, then we.
So that will be on the action item for the board to approve?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I had.
Can you, what is the difference between a green vinyl coated chain link fence and a black one? And then are all the fences currently, right now, green?
The fences in that, in that complex are all green now. They're all similarly aged. The, the goal that's been explained to me is to transition the green fences to black fences moving forward. So if we were to put a new fence in, we'd want it to be black.
If you don't mind, before we close this out, if you could give us a cost comparison between just continue on, continuing the turf rather than put in concrete, rather, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So?
We can, we can come back to that.
Yeah.
For the, for the final vote meeting, we can have that number.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Now we're on to action items. Okay. Approval of action item eight point one, Dr. Duncan.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the first reading of policy updates as discussed by the board during the October work session.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Okay, eight point two. Action item eight point two. Would you do this one?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve Bob Haiti, be appointed to the twenty-twenty-five IASB delegate to the twenty-twenty-five IASB delegate assembly on behalf of the Edwardsville Community Unit School District Number Seven, Board of Education. That is a motion. Do I have a second?
Sure. Second. Thanks, Bob.
Any discussion?
No, just thank you for doing that.
Okay.
It's a good opportunity, so I'm glad you're doing it.
Thank you. Yeah. And those, those of you that don't know, in November, the IASB has their, their big conference that they do once a year, and so as the motion is for me to represent the school district in a lot of the resolution votes that they, they will be doing. So I will be educating myself on all those things between now and then. Okay?
And we'll have discussion as a board, I believe?
We will.
Yeah, about the resolutions.
Um, those in favor, see if I can, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Don't you say nay.
No. Eyes have it. Okay, action item eight point three. I move to approve a resolution of the Board of Education committing to the original prioritized list of twenty-twenty-three bond projects. That is a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Would you like to read?
Yes.
Some of this, please, just so.
I need to find it here. Hold on a second.
I have a printed copy, if that helps.
Yeah, that'd be great, if you do.
Is this going to be put anywhere for the public?
It's a front and back from the first.
Do you see?
Okay. Resolution of the Board of Education, Edwardsville Community School District Seven, committing to the original prioritized list of the twenty-twenty-three bond projects. Whereas the voters of the Edwardsville Community Unit School District Seven authorized issuance up to a hundred million dollars in general obligation bonds in the April fourth, twenty-twenty-three consolidated general election to improve the sites of bill and equip additions to and alter repair and equipment. School buildings, including construction security improvements and secured entryways, whereas the Board of Education has judiciary duty to the community and taxpayers to ensure the bond proceeds are used for their intended purpose in an efficient and transparent manner. And whereas, following extensive public engagement, facility assessments, and community input during the fall of twenty-twenty-two, the board identified a series of projects to be funded by the bond proceeds. And whereas, the board has formally reviewed and approved the January ninth, twenty-twenty-three, a prioritized list of projects to guide the use of bond funds, balancing urgent facility needs with long-term strategic goals. And whereas, the official list of prioritized projects is attached to this resolution as Appendix A and is incorporated by reference. And whereas, for the original prioritized list, Exhibit A, the following projects have not yet been completed. Number three on the list is for remediate asbestos in building renovations additions at Hamill Elementary School. Number six, and these are the items as they're listed on the appendix, but not the order that they'll be in. So number six on the list, safe and accessible playgrounds at all primary and intermediate schools. Double sign. Safe and accessible gymnasiums at Leclair Elementary, Glen Carver Elementary, and Columbus Elementary Schools, and media center at Columbus Elementary School, Woodland Elementary School, and Edwardsville High School. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Board of Education of Community School Unit School District Number Seven. It's a mouthful, sorry. Madison County, Illinois, as follows, the board hereby finds that all the recitals contained in the preamble to this resolution are full, true, and correct, and does incorporate them into this resolution by this reference. And then there's another legal jargon. But basically, what we're saying is, is that of the remaining projects that are from the original list, of that, the first priority is the remediation of asbestos and building renovations addition, slash addition at Hamill Elementary School. The next item that we would come to is safe and accessible playgrounds at all primary and intermediate schools. And then would be the accessible gym at Leclair, Glen Carver Elementary, and Columbus. And then, no, the next one, which was the last on the list, would be the media center at the high school. And Columbus and Woodland Elementary School. So.
This is important.
Oh, you, okay, sorry. I see. Again, the last line, sorry. The board recommits to completing remaining projects per the original prior, it's been a long day, sorry. The board recommits to completing remaining projects per the original prioritized bond project list with remaining bond funds. You're right, that is important. Beginning with Hamill Elementary School. Okay? Effective date of this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption. Okay. Any discussion? Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
That was, thank you for having, uh, read that, read that last part, because I think that's important to say, we're, just because it says we are doing all of these projects that have not yet been completed, that doesn't necessarily mean that we will be able to get to all of them. It just depends on how many dollars we have between, uh, when we get done with the projects that are in process.
That is correct. That is correct. And thank you for making me read that part. So you're right, that is, that is the important part. Okay. Any other questions, discussions?
I think this is necessary. I'm glad that this is finally happening. That shows that this board is, is forward-moving, working together, getting out there, and making sure that we stand up to the commitments that we made to this public, and we will continue to do so.
Okay. And the one thing that was not listed in the actual resolution was any further work that Mike had done at Midway with the water reme, or moisture remediation and things like that. And that is in the exhibit, but since some of that work has already been done, then it did not get put in the resolution part, just like the Lincoln School project that's in progress and things like that. So the Midway is still on a list, but it wasn't in the actual resolution.
Right.
But it is in the exhibit.
Right. And all this will be posted. So it's all going to be accessible, so everybody can read it and see how long it takes them to read it compared to me. So, okay. Now, do we have to do like a full thing, or? Okay, cool. Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Okay. Approval of action item eight point four, Dr. Duncan.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve personal matters related to the resignation and retirements of employees as discussed earlier in executive session.
So move?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Carrie, please call the rule.
Bryan?
Yes.
Carver?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Haiti?
Yes. Approval of action item eight point five, Dr. Duncan.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve personal matters related to the appointment, employment, compensation, or transfer of employees pending required certifications and professional educator license, completion of paperwork, and all background fingerprint checks completed and cleared as discussed earlier in executive session.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Carrie, please call the rule.
Bertles?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Carver?
Yes.
Haiti?
Yes. Okay, so that's it for our action items. Uh, are there any board members that wish to share a brief announcement? Okay, cool. Uh, the next item, ten point one, are future agenda topics. You can see them all there. So, obviously, subject to be changed, depending on what happens between now and then. And adjourned closed session.
I got a question for you, Bob.
Yep.
On the facilities finance portion there, where it says facilities update, is that going to be an all-district encompassing update, or just our current projects? Like, are we going to identify areas that need concern, or, you know, areas of concern that need immediate repair?
The plan for that one is to have just a general update, not the big picture update. This will be more just the little projects we're finishing up that we're closing up.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We do not need to close to executive session. So